Okay. Call to order at this time, please stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance and the Texas flag.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, thank you for the foresight and the vision you've given us for the future of Corinth. And Father, we just pray that this vision is carried out with your hand and your heart focused on our community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a couple proclamations to read. First one is for the National Payroll Week. And we have payroll specialist Julis Castella. She's going to be receiving this once I get it read, okay? All right. National Payroll Week. Payroll Org and its more than 20,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign that pays tribute to the nearly 150 million people who work in the United States and the payroll professionals who support the American system by paying wages, reporting workers' earnings, and withholding federal employment taxes. And payroll professionals in Corinth, Texas, play a key role in maintaining the economic health of Corinth, carrying out such diverse tasks as paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information for child support enforcement, and carrying out tax withholding reporting and depositing, and payroll departments collectively spending more than $2.4 trillion annually complying with a myriad of federal and state wage and tax laws. And whereas payroll professionals play an increasingly important role ensuring the economic security of American families by helping to identify non-custodial parents and making such they comply with their child support mandates. And payroll professionals have become increasingly proactive in educating both the business community and the public at large about the payroll tax withholding system. And payroll professionals meet regularly with federal and state tax officials to discuss both improving compliance with government procedures and how compliance can be achieved at less cost, both government and businesses. And the week in which Labor Day falls has been proclaimed National Payroll Week. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Heideman, Mayor of the City of Corinth, support the efforts of the payroll professionals in the city of Corinth, Texas, and do hereby proclaim the first week of September as Payroll Week. Congratulations. Will the council come down and take a picture with it? Congratulations.
Thank you.
No. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do support payroll.
If there's one department that supports it.
The city has been wonderful to work for. Bay is a wonderful manager, and I appreciate everything the city has done for myself and for all the employees.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Okay, we have another proclamation. For United Way of Denton County. And there's a video that we're going to see before the proclamation is ready.
Hey, you. Yeah, I'm talking to you.
Yes, we're talking to you.
Did you know that you play an important role for a whole lot of people?
Like a whole lot. You may not think so, but you do.
You have the power to be the change that you want to see in the world.
Wait, didn't someone famous say that? But seriously, the change that matters is made by ordinary people.
Ordinary people like you, and me, and that guy, and that guy. No matter who you are, you can make a difference.
Like, you make a huge difference when you give to the United Way of Denton County.
Why?
Why? Why?
Did they just ask me why?
Well, a community is like a body.
Some parts are really healthy, like maybe where you live.
But other parts are struggling, kind of like when my mom tries to do a push-up. Those struggling areas need attention.
Those are the vulnerable people, like kids and seniors.
Seniors are grandparents. Kids and grandparents shouldn't struggle.
I bet you are someone who wants to make our community better.
But sometimes it's hard for folks to know what the needs in the community are.
We get it. That's where United Way comes in.
They are like a multivitamin, giving an extra boost to the struggling parts of our community.
And you know, you gotta take your vitamins.
United Way gives a boost to kids struggling to stay in school, to people who feel sad on too many days, to seniors who need a meal,
to people who don't have a home.
But they can't do it without you.
You know what's in that multivitamin? Your donations.
Now, you may be saying, but my small donation won't make much of a difference.
We are here to tell you, yes, it will. Because your donation plus her donation plus his donation.
Can't believe you all making me do math.
Plus, their donation equals a big impact for Denton County. We don't know everything. We're just kids, but we do know this.
It's up to all of us to create something that could make the world awesomer.
Sorry, that's not a word.
So you want to change the world, or at least your little part of it in Denton County?
You gotta show up. Let's be the change together.
Because together, we can lead the way to make our community better.
Better for me.
And me.
And me.
And me.
And us.
That's what it means to live united. So let's do this, people. Hey, wait. We want to thank our friends who made this video possible. Roll credits.
Very good video. Again, tonight, we have United Way Denton County Board Member Cynthia Hill, Leah Jordan, and Lucas, our movie star. So he's here tonight to help accept the proclamation. He's a lovely recital proclamation. Sam, did you put that on?
No, I got Gary Henderson.
Okay. Proclamation, Live United Month, September 2024, United Way of Denton County. For as United Way of Denton County mobilizes communities like Corinth to action so all can thrive and by working together with donors, supporters, and collaborators across Denton County, United Way of Denton County creates opportunities to expand education, promote economic mobility, improve health and mental health, and provide basic needs for over 53,000 county residents annually. United Way of Denton County leads the effort with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to our neighbors' immediate needs and seek our better solution for larger community-wide issues. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Bill Heideman, Mayor of the City of Corinth, hereby declare September 2024, Live United Month, and proudly join United Way of Denton County in calling on all residents of Corinth to give to one, to impact many as we take action to live united for a better Denton County for all of us. Signed, this 22nd day of August 2024. Please come to the podium and receive that, and maybe our movie star can have a few words for us. There you go. This is all yours, my friend.
Proclamation.
You made it happen.
You were all very good at your thumbs.
You want to say it for once? You can have the microphone.
Okay, well, just a couple words, but there's no way we could top that fabulous, amazing video by the kiddos. But you all have helped us reach over 53,000 people across Denton County. So we appreciate it from the bottom of our heart. Every gift to United Way of Denton County impacts at least 18 nonprofits throughout the Denton County. So thank you so much, from health and financial insecurity to at-risk students, victims of abuse and neglect. So when you give united, your dollars are critical and finding solutions to face these challenges and overcome them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three, receive a presentation from Community Waste Disposal for the 2023 Annual Review of Disposal Services. Mr. Campbell.
Take it away, CWD.
Good evening, my name is Robert. And you're never supposed to follow pets or children. I get to follow children, so I'm going to try to be my best this evening. That was an awesome video, by the way. I'm Robert, CWD. We've been servicing the city of Corinth since 2013. In 2013, you guys had 6,400 homes. Around 2024, you guys have approximately 7,750 homes. It's an increase of 20%.
There we go.
In CWD, while we've been servicing you, we service you five days a week with trash and recycling. We have three trucks a day servicing you, trash and recycling. They're all rear loaded. They're all C and G trucks. We'll talk about that in a moment. All residents who are part of you, they can come down to our transfer station in 2010 California Crossing. That's pretty close to what Texas Stadium used to be when Cal was used to win the championship. And that's the recycling truck there, and that's a C and G truck. We run three trucks a day, except on Tuesdays, a little bit heavier day, we run four trucks. There's C and G, and I apologize for being upside down. It wasn't like that. And being C and G is real important because, as we're all aware, every time you turn on the news during the summertime, there's air attainment issues every single day here, unfortunately, because so many people live here in the area. And CWD has the largest fleet of C and G trucks. And it helps out with nitrous oxide, makes it more economical. And that's real important because when our market adjustments come up, the market adjustment is not going to be based on diesel fuel, dirty diesel. This can be playing on C and G, which is usually 20, 30% more economical. Recycling tons per year. In 2023, you guys recycled almost 2,000 tons of material in 1928. That's around 41 pounds per home per month. That's an outstanding number of recycling being diverted from the landfill. That's to the demographics of rate in the community. The service opportunities, these are how many incidents of our drivers driving and missing or things of that nature. We had 10 incidents last year, which means it's outstanding. We had 332 service inquiries, and that's down a little bit from last year just because it's the same drivers driving the streets. And we have a 10-year, around three to five years in the drivers. What we're planning on doing, the CWD is actually growing. We're going to be providing 57 C and G trucks by the end of 2025 for our whole fleet. And some of those will be used in the city of Corinth. We also have an app here, so residents can download the app and find out their service days when it's affected by a holiday, and commercial customers can pay their bills on it. We also do commercial recycling. There's a lot of recycling going down in the city of Corinth, and that's Chiphol Tag. And then did around 54 tons of material in 2023. We also do an HHW program, residents can call in, and we pick that up. Pick it up on Mondays. And we did a little, probably around 32,000 pounds in 2023. And some of the paint. Now, we take all that paint, we take it back to CWD, and then we use it in different programs. The city of Asheville actually uses it to paint their homes. And they actually have a program there that a lot of the veterans who are on a hard time, they get a community outreach, and they use all our paint to restore the homes inside and out. Now, what's been going on recently in 2024, as you all know about the storms that came through here. And the storms kind of looked like that. We worked with city staff over many weeks, and we picked up over 4,300 tons of brush, almost 68,000 cubic yards of brush. And that's a lot of brush, and you guys are all aware of how to brush it this area during the storm. Now, being locally owned and operated, we get very involved in the community. We attend a lot of the monthly lectures at the Lake City Chamber of Sneaky Feet. We also helped the city of Corinth in 2023 get the gold tar status to keep Texas beautiful. And we also do a lot of green events. We worked with the Lake City Chambers, and that's the Bike Rally for the past three years. We'll talk about that a little bit later. We worked with the city of Corinth on a trash often, held in November at City Hall. And we also worked with a little, part of it with the Lake Dallas Education Foundation and a member of Master up in Denton. We had a table there, it was pretty fun evening. And they asked me to speak at Corinth in the spring of every year. We've done this for the past three years. We actually speak to elementary schools on a Friday afternoon, usually in March. It's a little bit colder then, that's why I dress like that. And we talked about it real briefly about what's recyclable and what's not. But to be honest, the children standing in line, if they're good listeners, they get to stand in line at home or horn. And that's a big deal for them to do now. But we also get real, and these are some of the things we've done this year. You might recognize some of the people there. We got involved with the Lake City Tour on the bus. And what's amazing about that is Net Seeds is a company not even Corinth, but it was making steel homes, and that's an outstanding program. And the homes actually built in Corinth. And we're going to work with staff next year because that's some awards that there's not that many communities that are making homes out of recycled steel. And I believe that there was some other council people in this picture. I'm not sure if it bothered me. But we also participated in the Lake Chambers Awards banquet in January of this year. The 50th anniversary, we helped with that out. I kind of spoke at that. And what amazed me and motivated, I spoke at that and talked about what was going on 50 years ago. I was talking about the Super Bowl, and Grady actually spoke after me. He said he was at that Super Bowl, which is pretty amazing. First time I kind of felt young, young, full of young in that opportunity. And then the Bike Rally, we've been doing this for the past three years, working with Tina and her staff. And this year is going to start and end in Agoura, which is pretty exciting. What we've always been trying to do is trying to increase the numbers. And this year, we've been really working really hard. And we've worked with this gentleman here. I met him at a Bike Rally in Paris, Texas. And he's handing out three to 500 little cards. And he's actually, this weekend is the big Super Bowl of bike races in Wichita Falls, Ohio, to hell. He actually lives in Little Elm, and Tina and the Lake Siders chap have made that banner. He's going to promote that and hand out around 1,200 cards. We're expecting the Bike Rally to probably be doubling the numbers from last year. It's going to be a great race. And we also did Secret Santa last year, working with Tina. And one thing you might not know about, CWD being locally owned and operated, every year, everybody, a magazine called Waste 360 ranks the solid waste companies. CWD is the top 10 in private companies. And that's an outstanding thing, some of the partnerships with our community since Corinth, 2013, helped us accomplish that. And these, how many tons were recycled in 2023? I guess almost 2,000 tons. And I spoke in January of this year, gave a market adjustment. We already gave you guys that bench. We've talked to city staff in Agoura, that park out there. We're going to work on some sponsorships with that because that's a beautiful park. We want to help the community, sort of, the fly. And we want to help that to be more green events in the future. Do you have any questions at this time?
Questions from council? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Robert.
Okay, citizens' comments. Please leave me your comments in three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. Is there any citizens' comment? Okay. I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item number eight, consider an act on a resolution of the city council of the city of Corinth, Texas, adopting a proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 municipal tax rate that will not exceed the voter approval tax rate. Calling a public hearing to be held on September 5, 2024, at Corinth City Hall at 6:30 PM, requiring publication of a notice of public hearing on tax increase in accordance with state law, providing for the incorporation of premises and providing an effective date. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Our finance director, Leanne Bunzelmeyer, will cover this item and answer any questions that you have. This is related to the budget discussion we had a couple of weeks ago. And we do have one small change on one of the dates that she will explain to you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So every year is part of the truth and taxation process. The city council has to vote on the tax rate that you choose to publish in the newspaper. And that is the highest tax rate that you will consider when you adopt your tax rate in September. Additionally, you must set dates that you're going to adopt the tax rate and also a date for the public hearing. Now, historically, the truth and taxation law said that you could have a public hearing anywhere from zero to 14 days before you adopted your tax rate. That has actually shifted to you can only have the public hearing from zero to seven days before you adopt your tax rate. So the ordinance that you have before you has stated a public hearing date of September 5. We cannot have the public hearing on September 5. So when you approve this item, if you could move the public hearing date to September 19. So we will have the public hearing on the same night that we will adopt the tax rate. Now, please keep in mind that this is only the public hearing for the tax rate. We will have a public hearing on September 5 on the budget. And that and that night, we will also talk about the tax rate as well. So we will actually have two public hearings, on the budget on September 5 and on the tax rate on September 19. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
So Leanne, in the proposed motion at the bottom sentence, does that need to be Thursday, September 19?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, so both of, we're going to place a proposal on the September 19 council agenda, and then we're also going to have the public hearing on that same night.
Correct.
Get the motion correct.
Yes.
Okay, is there any other questions? I entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I would move to approve a resolution placing a proposal on the September 19, 2024 council agenda to consider a fiscal year 2024-2025 property tax rate of .51480 cents per $100 evaluation, which exceeds the no new revenue tax rate of .49209, but is below the de minimis tax rate of .51596 and an approved voter approval tax rate of .51490 and to set a public hearing on the proposal to consider approving the tax rate for Thursday, September 19 at 6:30 PM at the Corinth City Hall at 3300 Corinth Parkway, Corinth, Texas, 76208.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Council comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members, the public and or staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Carter.
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Henderson.
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Pickens.
I do have something personal. So tomorrow marks one year since Maddie had a stroke. And tomorrow, we're going to take Maddie up to the ICU to do her victory walk. And the day that we were discharged to Plano, I told the staff up there that we would be back in one year, and she would be walking. And I think they thought I was crazy because she was not conscious and was not still expected to survive. And our hope is that her story will encourage other families that are walking that same path right now. And to also encourage the doctors, the nurses, the therapists, staff, to include even the janitors, that what they do matters. And that against all odds, they never gave up on Maddie. I mean, we were never going to give up on her, but they fought for her just as hard as we did. And to all my friends and the citizens of Corinth and the surrounding cities that don't really know me and didn't know Maddie, but offered their heartfelt prayers and support, I cannot thank them enough. And to my fellow council members that showed grace and kindness when I had to be away in the most difficult time of my life, I thank you. And to my husband, Brian, who was a rock and let me fall apart too many times to count. But tomorrow is a victory and a testament to the power of prayer and the strength of my girl. And I just wanted to thank all of you who showed care and concern and support to me and my family the past year. I thank you all.
Mr. Campbell.
Nothing, Mayor, thanks.
Okay. Congratulations, Kelly, on your achievement with your daughter. It's remarkable, and we're very proud of all the things that you're doing and what you do.
Thank you, Bill.
But I do have one announcement, and that is it will be a week, next Wednesday, down at Mayor's Pizza Cook-Off. And I'm in it. And so my pizza's name is Texas Luau Pizza Pie. And it's got some pretty good ingredients in it. So if you want to participate, come down there. It goes from five to seven, and I'm competing against seven other mayors. So last year, I took last place. I'm hoping I don't end up.
Mayor, will you remind us of the name of the location?
It's.
Motor City Pizza.
Motor City Pizza.
Motor City Pizza, yeah. What's that? Oh, I'll ship. Oh, Galship Christian Athlete. Okay. So put it on your calendar if you wanna have some fun and laughs and laugh at me, so that's, be a good time for you. Okay. Now we're going into executive session under section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, legal advice, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four, personnel matters, and section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, economic development. And we're going into executive session at seven-twenty.